Page through the agenda. Item two, adopting of agenda.
Motion to adopt.
Motion made seconded during discussion. Not those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close name.
Aye.
We have Representative Dama joining us. I am running soon. We're to be joined shortly when he is, he can participate in meeting.
He has a camera.
He's not muted though.
I know, but don't need to mute.
I don't think it's enough.
Okay, I know like all our CDs get visible. You consider part of it.
Turn item three, triple minutes, regular meeting on August twelfth, twenty twenty five. We've been so. Motion made and accepted. This time Solomon. Hence. Are there any errors or omissions or changes? There are none, those in favor. The next session is signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Close name.
Aye.
I had it. And item three, uh, four, public remarks, is there anyone who starts to make public remark? Sir. Please state your name and address. The bias.
Good evening, David Price, thirty five Spice Hill Drive. East Hampton, Connecticut. Uh, the subject of this, uh, other comment is EV charging proposal. Uh, to the. Chair, member, and town manager, uh. While the conversion from internal combustion engines, also known as ICE vehicles, to electric vehicles, also known as EVs, has not been as fast as previously anticipated. The number of EVs as proportion of the overall vehicles sold in the US and in particular Connecticut continues to grow. However, not all residents have easy access to EV charging stations. As a member of the East Hampton Clean Energy Task Force, we've been exploring ways to bring more EV charging infrastructure to our town for quite a while. It is a matter that we have invested significant time looking into and have evaluated several options. We are cognizant of not wanting to burden the town with financing and managing charging stations. The task force believes we have found a very good near term opportunity to add a couple of DB charging stations with virtually no risk or cost to the town. However, we need to act quickly to take advantage of this opportunity. Pura has launched the pilot program with a company called Vault Post to add sixty charging stations across Connecticut. Vault Post refits existing lampposts with reliable EV chargers, enabling affordable and easy access to EV charging. And, uh, in the end, uh, included the web link through Vault Post. Um, at our invitation, a representative from Vault Post attended via Zoom our Clean Energy Task Force meeting on September second and provided a very compelling proposal to add a couple of EV charging stations in East Hampton at no cost to the town, thanks to the program funded by Pura. As a result, East Hampton is among a very small group of towns invited into this very limited pilot program if we decide to participate. We're hoping the town council will adopt a resolution at the September twenty three meeting to authorize the town manager at his discretion to pursue this opportunity for EV charging stations with Vault Post. So between now and that meeting, we will provide additional information to the council members that better describes what is being proposed. I encourage you to ask any questions that arise and convey them to, uh, the task force. Chairman Wes Kaplan, who's in the audience, uh, myself or the town manager. Task force would like to make a short presentation then to the town council at the meeting on September twenty third in support of a draft resolution. A representative from Vault Post has offered to make himself available via Zoom to answer any questions town council members may have in real time. Our goal is to have the proposal, proposed resolution approved at the twenty third, September twenty third meeting. Thank you for your time and consideration of this proposal.
Thank you. Anyone else here to make public comments?
Leonard Johnson, twenty one, Long Ross St. Road. We moved to, to East Hampton in nineteen sixty seventy three because we found an affordable house and East Hampton had one of the lowest milk rates in the state. To today, East Hampton has one of the highest rates in the state. Despite reevaluation, I suspect we all will be paying more dollars to, to, to the town than ever before. East Hampton needs a new fire station. But the proposed Skinner Street property is not, not acceptable because of contamination and very close proximity to, to, to a flood plain. It was not, not acceptable for the town hall. And it's not certainly not, not acceptable for fire, firefighters to reside there. My wife and I are, are expecting unavoidable costs of tens of thousands of dented dollars for silver we neither need nor want. Our touch to town is becoming unaffordable. Thank you.
Any other public remarks? Anyone? Anyone?
Yeah.
One online. Brian Turner.
Brian?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm sorry, folks, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Oh, okay, sorry, sorry about that. Thank you. Yeah, so this is Brian Turner, uh, forty two Spice Hill Drive. Um, I, I just wanted to talk real quick about the, uh, material review and reconsideration policy that's going to be discussed later regarding the library, uh, materials in the library. Um, I, the folks at the library, uh, committee were kind enough to answer some of my questions last night. Um, I thought it was pretty constructive and I really appreciate it. Uh, but with that said, I, I, I do think that the, uh, proposed, uh, policy changes really need to have a hard look at uh, by everybody on the town council and people in the community before you folks make any decisions, whether or not you think those changes should be passed. Um, I, I, it took me forever to even find the information. Um, it wasn't readily available. You had to go dig through packets for tonight's meeting to find it rather than making it easily readable and findable by anybody in the public. And I, I just have some quick concerns. I want to just talk in general because I honestly, I didn't have enough time to read the whole thing because it wasn't easy to find. But, uh, uh, some of the concerns really, um, uh, it looks like the onus of who decides what is appropriate and what is not appropriate for our library essentially rests in the hands of, uh, the library director. I may not be using the term, uh, the right title, so if I'm not, please forgive me. Uh, but if you, if a member of the public, uh, requests something to be reviewed and possibly removed for any reason, um, you know, a- after it, it gets, uh, that request gets denied, there is a repeal process, but at that point, instead of going to other people in the town to get other people's opinions, it looks like a group of people that the state determines gets to weigh in and, um, pretty much, uh, bolster whatever denial already happened. Uh, and it's a little ambiguous about who the people are from the state. Um, and honestly, it really feels like a process in place to, uh, diminish the, um, the voice of the people in the town that pay taxes, that fund library and give extra weight to quote unquote experts that the state deemed more, uh, I don't know, that have more weight in deciding what is and what is not appropriate for the library. Um, that doesn't really sit well with me and, and, and once the decision is made by those folks in the library director, uh, the basically the, the rule here says you can't complain about it for three years. You can't. So it's like decisions final, don't talk about it for three years. Uh, and that doesn't seem like a very open process to get the community involved. It seems like a, a process that gets to state the way in and basically shut you up if they don't agree with you. Now, I don't have anything in particular, uh, specific in mind, but, um, I, I can imagine there's probably quite a few things out there that some people at some point, whether they're, whatever side of the political spectrum they're on, may have concerns about. Um, uh, and I think it's short sighted for people to, um, to roll their eyes at, at, at someone like me who may, may be concerned about this. Uh, and I'm not saying anyone in that room did, but I, I brought it up online this week and people were like, oh, you're, you're for banning books and quite the opposite. This actually has the effect of giving the state the ability to put in what it wants to put in and take out what it wants to take out. And it actually diminishes the ability of the private citizen to weigh in. But anyway, I know I'm running out of time. I would just encourage you not to pass this tonight. I'd encourage you to look at it. Look at it very closely and really think about it without, uh, personal bias and see where this could actually chill, uh, public uh, discourse, public, uh, civil debate and discussion on topics that could be very important to everybody in this town. And I would, I really would beg you not to, uh, accept the process that gives the state more power than the taxpayer. Um, and I, and I know this is connected to being compliant, so state funding could be available, but that's a, that's a pretty terrible reason to, uh, to kind of, uh, essentially all but silence, uh, the town if they do have issues. And then just one last question. I would love to know what the library has in place for not necessarily removing materials, but if there is, if there are materials that are in, say, the children's section that may be better in an adult section, what the process for that is, if the same process. Um, and I'd just like to hear more about that, but I'll let you, I'll let you go. Thanks for listening to me.
Is there anyone else who would like to make public comment at this point? We should move on. Gender items, presentations.
Uh, you have no, uh, presentations tonight.
Thank you. Turn item six, bids and contracts.
Also no bids or contracts.
Good. Turn item seven, resolutions, ordinances, policies, and proclamations.
Again, none of those.
Turn the item eight, continued business. Eight A, subcommittee reports and updates. Jack, you want to go first?
Okay.
I just wanted to, we have a water committee. And, um, David has included it in the, uh, town manager's report. Um, so we're bringing, we're working to bring water to East Hampton because there are many residents who have trouble getting water. In some cases, the ground is contaminated and others they're natural contaminant. Contaminants like iron or the chemicals. In addition, some residents cannot drill for water because of their location. There are some town water systems which we operate, but which are small scale and not efficient. So we've had funding and our partner Apex is preparing a water system design. Uh, East Hampton has water wells that open dock which have been determined to be inadequate to supply a water system for East Hampton. There's been determined that there is a large aquifer in Portland nearest to East Hampton, which has a very large quantity of very clean water that could be tapped for an East Hampton water system. The town is working to access this water source through purchase or other arrangements. Connecticut Water has a well in this nearby aquifer and it has been proven to have a large quantity of very clean water. Our town is discussing with Connecticut Water various approaches to cooperating and bringing water to East Hampton. And our water committee is working to figure this out and to uh, hopefully get, uh, significant amount of outside funding uh, to make, uh, a water system for East Hampton.
Thank you, Ken. Thank you.
Um, I have something, but I'm not sure, um, uh, it's related to the fire department, so it could either go under reports or if we were, if it would be under, um, I can do that too.
Yeah. Any other? Any of subcommittee reports?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, if I could.
That's Jordan.
Just out of the ether. Uh, I just wanted to mention that the senior center, uh, town survey is currently open. We've gotten really good responses so far. But the survey will be open for another couple of weeks and I'm just wanted to encourage everybody to uh, either log on uh, to complete the survey or stop by the library, the senior center or town hall to complete a paper copy. Uh, because the more responses we get, the better information we'll have.
Thank you. Yeah. Oh, really? Yeah. Moving on. Turn item eight. Opinion business B, consideration of actions pertaining to the potential acquisition of eleven Skinner Street for a fire station. Yes, I.
If I, did I, uh?
I was just sort of going to summarize where I thought we were and that you.
I can help you with that too.
Okay. Uh, essentially. I think we all understand, we know that the Board of Finance has certain additional information pertaining to the environmental quality of the properties in question. We adopted a resolution at our last meeting. That, uh, we would seek out a second engineer for deals with this. I think Mr. Cox had discussions with, um, members of the Board of Finance. The chair, possibly a metric. About how to proceed with it. We didn't give a second opinion because time predominantly. And our current engineers did provide further update which apparently was not satisfactory because the Board of Finance decided at this stage not to reconvene to adopt the resolutions necessary. But at this point, I don't think there's any decision certainly other than no part of the leadership of finance to proceed with the eleven Skinner Street property. As you know, the current agreement that we have with the, the owner called for a resolution by referendum by the thirty of the month, we now know that, uh, unless magically part of the Board of Finance wanted to move ahead with it, it's going to be off the table. So next Tuesday or Wednesday. Likewise, I had heard comments that, uh, individuals might be interested in having a referendum intended with general election. That's now off the table as well because the ballot having to be submitted to the state approval. So at this point. It's going to be my intent, intention to withdraw consideration for the consideration.
Right. Alright, so, um, yes, last, at our last meeting, we did make a motion to, um, and we, as a result of the Board of Finance asking for more testing, uh, to bring the property up to residential standards and, um, after talking with Mr. Cox, our LEP did do some, uh, updated the report with some additional testing that Wayne had done uh, since, um, the original report was, um, done, but with that report, as we all read, came more records, more costs and other items that were not even posted in that report. Um, so I think that that might be some of the concern of the Board of Finance, but, um, I have, uh, gone to, uh, the Lockwood Firehouse. Um, I've been to a couple of the, uh, the Tuesday night meetings. Um, and although I do, I do believe that the, uh, Skinner Street property, um, does fit the need for our fire department. Um, my concern is in the manner of how it all came to us. And I don't think personally that at this time it would pass a referendum, um, unfortunately, um. So, uh, so if we were to put it out to referendum where the Board of Finance did come back and say, send it to the taxpayers, one of my, my concerns was, um, what happens if it fails miserably because of some other, whether it be the owner of the property, whether they don't feel, the taxpayers did not receive enough information, whether it was done too hastily. Um, I think could be an issue. And if that was to happen, then we'd be right back in the drawing board. And when this was presented, when this town hall was presented, it was supposed to be um, the town hall, the police department and the fire department. And I, I do believe that if the, uh, if it did go down in referendum right now, um, them going to back burner, it's already been put on the back burner for way too long. So, um, if you will, I did come up with a resolution, um, that you can pass that out. If you don't find it passing that down, um, I will read it out of the way of the, uh, so if you bear with me, um.
Ted, we're going to put this off until the next meeting.
Okay, um, can you, let me just put it up?
I don't want you to read it.
What?
We bring it up with our next.
Um, but it's part of my report, so I would like to just bring it into record and let people stew on it. If we don't make a motion, that's fine. Um, but I would like it to be out to the public at this time. So, um, uh, what I did was it says, whereas the county, the East Hampton Town Council recognizes the critical importance of providing safe, modern and efficient facilities for the East Hampton Fire Department in order to ensure effective emergency response and protection for its residents, property and business. And whereas the existing Company One Firehouse located at Free Barton Hill has served the community for many years, what may no longer properly meet the operational safety and regulatory requirements necessary for effective fire protection suitable for long-term use. And whereas in the best interest of the town, uh, in the best interest of the town to undertake a thorough and transparent review of the community's, um, fire protection needs, the adequacy of the current facilities and the potential option for renovation, relocation, or new construction. Therefore, be resolved that the town council hereby establishes the firehouse hearing committee charged with the following responsibilities. One, uh, needs assessment, evaluate the current and project fire, protect protection needs for the town, including staff and equipment, all response requirements, population growth, planned residential or commercial development to ensure the proper placement of the firehouse and ensure the facility, uh, the facilities and cover support accessible ISO ratings for the community. Two, facility assessment, review and report on the current condition of Company One Firehouse and any other related relevant facilities, including compliance with NFPA standards, exposure requirements, ADA accessibility and applicable codes and provide process and then to bring the existing facilities to full compliance. Uh, evaluation of town owned land, identifying and assess any town uh, existing town owned properties that could serve as suitable sites for the new town firehouse, for the new firehouse, including access zoning and infrastructure. A new construction option to evaluate and maintain the cost estimates of, for construction of a new firehouse in its town, uh, on town owned land. Alternative sites, if notable, suitable town owned land is available, review and report on the potential private parcels that may make the criteria for new firehouse, including costs considered. Retrofit the, uh, existing structures, evaluating provide cost estimates for retrofitting the existing non, uh, fire department buildings within the town limits that may be suitable for conversion into a firehouse. Community and financial impact, considered neighborhood impacts, project phasing, estimated life cycle cost, potential funding sources, including all applicable federal and state grants as well as municipal bonding and over financing options. Final recommendation, um, to provide a written report to the town council summarizing findings, presenting, um, comparative options and recommending whether a new firehouse is needed, where it should be located and how it should be financed and implemented. Be a further result that the firehouse hearing committee shall begin with nine voting members appointed as follows, each town council member, one, uh, Board of Finance, one member from the Board of Fire Commissioners, two members of the East Hampton Fire Department, three members of the public at large. The fire tree chief, the town finance director shall vote, serve as non-voting members for a committee and advisory capacity. Be a further result that the firehouse hearing committee shall organize its first meeting by selecting a chairperson, recording center chairman shall provide them, uh, provide interim updates to the town council as requested. Um, the committee shall issue a final written report to the town council no later than six months from the first meeting unless extension is granted by now. Yep. Are you making a motion to accept that? Team?
Ken?
I'd like to make a motion to accept that.
You have a second to that motion?
I will.
Motion made and accepted. Motion made and seconded. Any discussion and comments on the motion is presented?
I think it may be a bit too soon after just having heard it thirty, sixty seconds ago.
Uh, to, to buy into it quite frankly, uh, not that it may be wrong or
bad approach, but, uh, we had a table on it for a while. Take a look at it.
I'm sorry. Not that it's wrong. For a while, I didn't hear that.
Yeah, that's what I said. You heard it right. Could be true.
I agree with.
Are you making a motion?
I agree with Rich on this.
And on the floor too, I guess.
Table, uh, motion to table is in order at any time.
Okay. I, I would, I would make that motion to take. Again, not that it's bad, not at all. I think, uh, it's something we have to take a look at. Uh, I want to look at what it's doing, what it's saying, who's on the committing the things, the detail. And, uh, so that's my motion.
Do you have a second, Ted?
I'll second that. Without a, without a printed copy in front of me to be able to review this ahead of time, there's no way I can even vote on this.
We have a motion in a second. How can the table?
You can table it in any.
You can table the motion that's on your floor? Yeah, you can table a motion that's on your floor.
I recommend that we enable it till the next meeting. Because we can then bring it up in the next meeting.
That's fine, that's fine. That's totally alright. Okay. That's, that's totally our.
A little discussion on the matter?
Oh, yeah, one more thing. So just as a little aside, there is also a letter that I put in there because I, as much as I do believe that this uh, committee, uh, hearing committee needs to be formed, I do think with three council meetings left after tonight that, um, the, it not be built until the new, uh, sitting council because some are, most of us may or may not be here and, uh, for, in three more meetings. So, um, I do think that the committee does need to be formed, but to be, uh, filled upon the seating of the new council. Um, and the reason that I put that in there to the letter is, um, if you recall, um, the last committee was set up under the prior town council. And when, uh, this council took over, um, one of the town council members who was leading that committee, um, left, uh, he moved out west. Um, you never replace that person with another chair and so it's been for years, though I really don't want to see that happen. Um, I do want to see this, uh, move forward and that, so I do have a little, another letter that's in there that does suggest that we do this and then, um, hold off to, to appoint members until the, uh, until November.
Yeah, just a question, why wouldn't we just access to the new council?
Well, we may, uh, I want to take a look at what's here.
Yeah.
See what we may.
I want to take your spot.
Oh, I, I think it should, because I think that what you're saying is clear that you do not want to pursue the fire department and that is not true. Um, we do need to address the issues on Barton Hill. Um, and it was just that this eleven Skinner Street came through, um. It appeared rushed. It appeared rushed, whether it was or not, I know they've been working on it behind the scenes for some time. But to many residents, it did appear rushed and I know there's a lot of unanswered questions and there's some of those could be. That that property may still be, um, a viable option, but if you put it off. Um, indefinitely, as you indicated, um, then that property may not be on the, the table. So I do. Believe that the committee should start sooner rather than later.
I didn't make any decision about putting it off.
No, I didn't say it.
Nor did I, nor did I, cause I, I agree with Jack. We can revisit this in, uh.
I, I think that. Reading through and seeing this for the first time, there's a number of valid points in it. Think it needs to be shaped a little bit. I would also personally want to see Cobal. Cobal.
Uh, it, it, all, all, uh, properties are listed in that, not just one that, uh. It's not listed specifically, but it's, uh, facility worth it, um.
Anyways, we, we have an, we've been having.
We didn't, uh, uh, I, I understand that everybody just got this, so I think, you know, I think this is actually got some good stuff in it, but I understand that we, uh. Just having five minutes to look at it.
No further discussions, motion on table. I, I just like to say that we should get the, um, fire chief and, uh. Period, the fire experience committee comment. I mean, we have, do we have to do that? Any other discussion? Is it better to table, table in the motion till the twenty-third instead?
Chairman, may I say, just a question, sure. Uh, in a speech today, the, uh, finance board. Ostensibly had a question, uh, on this resolution relative to, uh, environmental concerns. We had, you know, we got a February letter from our environmental specialist. Uh, relative to that. And then after, uh, finance. Board decided not to pursue it. We got a, uh, which I say another letter from, from them. In a little bit more detail, with some costs involved specifically laid out, understood that, that's good. In the second letter, was there anything pointed out that the first letter did not meaning of a new. Different or more significant environmental issue than the first letter. Indicated. I knew we wanted to build a little more detail in the second letter, I know, I know that. And significantly more than that is good, I'm glad. But was there anything different? Significant and different that popped up as to an environmental concern that the first letter did not indicate?
I think that the short answer to that question is no. But there's a qualifier that goes with that. Uh, in the timeframe between the evaluations that our environmental professionals did. And wrote about in February. And the second letter that they wrote just a few weeks ago, uh. The owner of the property has done some additional evaluation. And has reported to the state what is referred to as a significant environmental hazard related to some of those. Issues primarily groundwater related. And so that was a, a difference that was more fully explained in the second letter. And not really touched on in the first because it didn't exist, but the issues around what that hazard is were discussed. In the first letter and in the evaluations that we had done and certainly in the evaluations the current owner had done. But otherwise, there was no discovery of new contaminants or anything of that sort. Uh, the main questions that were, if I may, um, supposed to understand what the Board of Finance was talking about, the main questions that the. Board of Finance was talking about, the, the tank, uh, and any, any other. Cleanup work that should have been done by the owner prior to the turning over of the property. And that's fundamentally the question in that. You know, I talked about that a little bit in my, my memo, but so. No, but although.
A follow-up question. Um, with your communication with our LEP. Did we ask them to look to see if there was any other discoverables in, uh, before they did it, or did they just? My understanding was that our, uh, what you have them do was to, um. Apparently, uh, Wayne was giving them testing data and updating data in their cost that was on their original report, but I didn't. Understand that you asked them if there was any other discoveries that, you know, may pertain to the project.
Um, I'm not a hundred percent sure what you're asking me, but we did not ask our LEP to do additional testing on the property.
Well, you, well, you just said that, um, there was no other discoverables. So did we ask them to even look for other discoverables? I guess is my question.
Uh, is discoverables interchangeable with the word contaminants?
Uh, sure.
Okay, um, we did not ask them to go looking for additional items. The testing that has been done on the site has been performed by the environmental professionals, one of the current owners. Work, um, and. They had done additional work and had done additional reporting to the state, which we then reviewed. Or we, meaning our LEP reviewed and provided this, provided additional information.
Is that right? That was on there, the, um. Correct. But I was just saying, we didn't ask them to look for anything else, so it would be not in their purview to even remotely go do any test or look for anything.
We, no, we did not ask for testing from our LEP, no.
But, but the current owner gave all the testing. That was required by law.
The, that, that is my understanding. They did testing, they filed their reports with the state, they remediated parts of the property. Uh, and.
And presumably if there were other issues. They would have been found.
I guess that's a safe assumption, sure.
I mean, that's.
I understand what you're saying, but if it was already done to commercial standards, would you be obligated to disclose anything else if we've already passed? When everything is brought to the theater to meet the contract?
Well, the way those report, the way the, the testing materials get reported, if you see, if you look at those materials, the way that. That information gets reported, there is a long list of. Elements, I'll call them constituents that they test for. Ranging from the, the average everyday things like lead and whatnot and to really. Extraordinary things like benzines and, you know, metals and all of that sort of stuff. Other metals rather, and, and various chemicals. There's a long list and the materials that we've seen, the reporting materials that we've seen. Identify all of those and compare them to, um, whether it's residential standards or other standards and. And testing abilities and those sorts of things. So we have seen the data for items that may exist. Below any kind of requirement, uh, below any kind of action level. And we've seen. The information on items that were remediated, we've seen information on the items that were, um. Perhaps in an area between what would be considered a residential standard and something else. So we've seen all of that data for at least what is normally tested for. And, and the reality is, we know the questions remain regarding that. Does that answer both of the questions? Okay. Thank you. Is, uh, if I may, is the action of the council essentially, um. I'm, I was hoping, I am hoping, perhaps the community is hoping, that there is a definitive action. And can I take it from. Uh, the council's willingness to consider the resolution that, uh. Council member Hins put on the table, that the collective statement of at least the six of you this evening, the majority of the council. Is that this matter is essentially off the table. The acquisition of eleven Skinner Street at this time is essentially off the table. Correct. And that there is not anticipated to be any effort to extend the agreement or make any effort right now to purchase this property.
You know, nothing, no intention at this point.
I'm, I'm not so sure that's correct. I think what will happen is, I, I think what I, what I feel is happening here. Is that, um. We, we are not at this time extending or asking for, for the contract to be extended. Um, however, I do have to say, uh, from a personal standpoint, I, I do feel. Uh, it, it's a mistake, uh, not to, not to consider eleven Skinner. After, uh, additional, uh, but review of some of these issues. Uh, to be quite honest, uh. Relative to the environmental, from what we've just discussed, um. You know, there are very, uh, which I say, there, there are very acceptable ways and, and especially relative to the state. Where any quote unquote contamination or what the, um, state may consider is contamination can be. Uh, successfully and properly contained or remediated. And, you know, to be honest, not going forward, in my view, my personal view. Not going forward with really. Really looking and analyzing eleven Skinner for location could be a multimillion dollar mistake on our part. Why do I say that? I say that because if we had the creed, go out, find a location. Build a entire new building out of bull claw at future construction costs. If we would be paying multi-million dollars more. For that option, when if we have a shot at acquiring eleven Skinner. And seeing what it can do. And considering the hours and hours and hours of work that have been put into this project already. Think that's a mistake. I think, uh. I think we should reconsider it if we, if we can. I'm not, I'm not in favor at this time of extending the, uh. Uh, the contract. Um, I feel bad that this issue has, has, you know, been a lot of hair on this issue. In the, in, in the community, amongst our town boards, um. I think this is a, this is a project that could very well suit. Our fire department for years to come. And I think it's the most cost-effective way to do it. And if we can get around everybody's fears, both real and imagined. As far as environmental goes, I think that would be the way to go. My personal opinion, uh. Thank you.
I'd work on.
Yeah.
But I don't, to, to, yeah, try to summarize. But I think where we are is, I think we're all in agreement that the firehouse work. Needs to go on in some fashion, that we, you know, we need to, uh, address the firehouse issue. And that we, at this point, can't, um, go ahead with eleven Skinner. But, or even though we, we think it might be a.
Maybe it makes in the future, but let's not extend it at this point. Let's take a clean break. And, uh, if further comes through discussion that it's more viable than many of us think. Then we'll re, we'll approach it.
I, I think that would be a decision by the new committee that's formed. And we certainly don't take eleven Skinner off completely, and it would be unfair to the owner. Give false hope of something that might or might not.
I think that's exactly right. Does any of all of that make sense, David?
Absolutely. I just wanted to get a little bit more onto the record so that we knew.
Figure it out, but no.
Moving, moving on.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Agenda nine, new business. Nine A, review and possible action on moratorium of memorandum. Agreement between the town of East Hampton and Lower Connecticut River Valley Council Governments with the Clean Energy Task Force.
Uh, thank you. On behalf of the Clean Energy Task Force, I'm, I'm bringing to the town council a, an agreement with, uh, the River Cog. For, uh, basically the River Cog to provide, uh, financial work and grant administration work. Uh, related to the partnership grant that our Clean Energy Task Force received in cooperation with, uh, three other municipalities in. Middlesex County, uh, to support the Heat Smart Program that they've been, uh, working on for quite some time. You may recall. From previous town manager reports, they received a small grant, uh, from, uh, a private entity. To begin this process, to really start looking at, um, encouraging people to do energy audits on their homes. Uh, and, uh, make improvements that will pay off for them in the long term in lower energy costs. And so. East Hampton's portion of that grant is fourteen thousand, one hundred dollars. And the total amount is over eighty thousand for the four municipalities. And the goal would be for, uh, under the memorandum, as I said, for River Cog to handle all of the paperwork, so to speak. Uh, and our members will be working locally to encourage our residents. And that's the point of the grant is to encourage our residents, and in particular. Our lower income residents, our income eligible residents to participate in this program, which initially is free and then, uh, can be used. Uh, and there are programs to offset the costs, uh, even of the, of the improvements. So. That is the goal. That is the request is to approve the agreement with a river tag for them to do the administrative work.
Does it help the ground anything?
It does not. The cost for the cog, uh, either comes out of its regional services grant or it comes out of this.
Back move to, uh, prove the group. Motion ban has been made to. Proving that the agreement seconded. If there are any further discussion on your order. If not, those in favor of the agreements signify by saying aye.
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 Sure. Was that an aye or an aye?
Aye, sir.
I'd just like to thank the Clean Energy Task Force for their initiative in getting this, um. Grant, uh, agreement and, uh, fuse them on and, uh, working with our residents. To lower their energy costs.
You're here.
Moving on in the agenda, new business, nine B, review and possible action on library policy.
I'll invite, uh, library director, Christine Cazuela to present this to.
Good evening, Hanva. Um, so the East Hampton Public Library has updated several of its policies. Our display policy, the programming policy, collection development policy and our materials reconsideration policy. To meet new requirements that are mandated by Connecticut state law. This year, the General Assembly passed Public Act twenty-five dash one sixty-eight, section three twenty-two. In response to increasing efforts nationwide to challenge library books and programs. This law states that materials, displays and programs can only be removed from a library for legitimate educational or professional reasons. And not because of a creator's background or the opinions they express. And it requires that policies include Connecticut anti-discrimination protection. In addition, the law sets out clear steps for how someone can challenge an item in the library's collection. A process that we already had in place, but has been updated to match the new state standards. Compliance with these requirements is especially important because it keeps us. Compliance with these requirements is especially important because it keeps us eligible for state funding opportunities. The Connecticut State Library administers grants to libraries across the state for things like new programs and initiatives. New construction and building renovations. Updating our policies ensures we remain eligible for these funds and without the updates, we lose that eligibility. It's important to know that these updates don't change the general philosophy of our policy or how we run the library on a day-to-day basis. The library's procedures remain the same, the criteria that we use to select books and remove books from the, from the collection remain the same. And our collections, programs, and displays still reflect our, still reflect our commitments of this community. The changes are primarily about including the very specific wording that the state is requiring. As part of this, the state also requires all library policies to follow a standard format with specific headings. And so to meet this requirement, we added sections on topics like virtual programs, digital collections, and donations. As well as a more comprehensive section on material displays where we previously only discuss our display case. While some of these don't directly apply to our current operations like virtual programs. We've included them to meet the, these follow the state law and keep the door open for future funding opportunities to support our services. Copies of the revised policies are included for you and I'm happy to answer any questions that you guys have.
Let's see, what, uh, how much do we get state funding?
So currently, it's a pretty small amount. As the principal public library in East Hampton, we get about fourteen hundred dollars. Just for being that principal public library, um, and then we get maybe two thousand more for the materials that. Residents of other towns come and check out at our library. So their use of our materials gets us a little bit of funding too. In total, it's less than five thousand dollars annually right now. I think the bigger thing to consider is, um. You know, opportunities for grant funding in the future for bigger projects, like if we did a renovation or something like that.
Um, so the, the. Policy went from seven pages to fifteen pages. That seems like, um. There's a little bit more that's not just the same as it was because if you had nine pages of additional verbiage. Um, that does tend to leave me to believe that there's a little bit more than the same as normal.
Yeah, and I mean, I certainly can understand that. Part of that is because they've required us to restate things that we. Like about, um, Connecticut's anti-discrimination protections. We used to just have that language in the collection policy and now it has to be in the collection policy, in the display policy, and in the program policy. So some of it is a little bit repetitive. Um, and then I think the new section certainly added some length to that as well.
What are some of those discriminations that they're talking about and, and does that apply to both adults and? Children and are they, uh, separate or are they the same discrimination, for example, and I, and I'm not trying to get into political thing, but. If, um, let's just say everything about transgender is in a, a three, you know, a third grade. Reading room instead of an adult reading room. Is, is that something that they're talking about for discrimination? You can't discriminate in a, in a, uh, you know, a child's. Uh, part of the library, but you know, floor that one, you know, is it universal or not?
So it, it doesn't get that specific. I think overall, um, the anti-discrimination protections are. Race, gender, you know, the things that we all kind of expect them to be, I think. Um, but. The state library isn't telling us where we should be putting any materials. We make those decisions on our own. And same thing with purchases. They don't ever tell us what we are buying for our collection.
What they can, if I read this correctly, because, um, so if someone challenges something you did or did not buy. Um, and you're overruled, it's by the state library board and then it cannot be revisited for that topic for. And as Brian says, for years, and I thought I misread that, but I thought that seemed like an awful long time to put something on hold. Um.
Well, so our patrons can't challenge materials that we don't have in our collection. If they have a material that they would like us to purchase for the collection. There's a separate process for that, which isn't really covered in these policies, but we have a form that they can fill out for that and. We always try to err on the side of, you know, if there's a demand for it in the community, we purchase it. As far as challenging materials that are in our collection, I am responsible for making the initial decision on that. If the patron, and that is really, I go back to our collection development policy, I compare the material, does it need these criteria? Yes or no? If the patron is unhappy with my decision, they appeal to the library advisory board. And the advisory board is made up of residents of this community. So the residents, so the advisory board can make a decision. Um, to not agree with me. Part of that process of the library advisory board will be, will undertake is to consult with those entities that I listed in the memo. So. The state librarian or their designee, a representative of our library consortium. The president of the CLA and/or their designee and the president of the Association of Connecticut Library Boards. But that person is just consulting, they're offering an opinion, they don't actually get to make that decision on behalf of the board or the community.
That's not how I read it either. What I would read is, it seems like they have the final say on it and it was not at the, uh, the town level. Um. I don't know, I'd like to read it all again before making a decision on this. Other five thousand dollars a year, um. I'd like to make love to the table in front of us.
Looking to the main table, is there a second?
I think, do you see anything major that we have to change? I'm sorry, did I, okay, can I do that? Can I ask a question?
Don't, don't second it, yes.
Is there a, something major we think was gonna happen? Like to meet this criteria, is it gonna change much there? And the way you're saying, it's not really gonna change much.
Yeah, I mean, I totally understand that Councilman Hens this perspective that like it. I, I know the copy you guys had a lot of, like a lot of underlines of changes and I agree when I gave it to Dave, I was like, this looks crazy. But overall, while it is significantly wordier than our policies, the sentiments remain the same and. Our procedures are not changing because of any of that. The only procedure would be if we did have a challenge, we would now just. The, not even the library staff, but the board would take that extra step to consult with those other parties.
And you seem to clear up a lot of my questions just by, e- e- even with the, uh, the children's section, Mary. Just curious as to what your input was on.
Well, we would not be out in a grant line if we wait two more weeks to.
No, the deadline on this is, it has to be approved by November first. So there's some time to think about it.
No second to them. Are there any other questions with the? Library direct. Your motion.
Mr. Carroll, make the motion to, um, adopt the library policies as presented.
Second to that, just a. Motion made and seconded. Who's in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
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 Motion.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Great work.
Moving on, agenda item nine, C, review and possible action on additional opioid settlement agreements.
I get myself very organized here. I can't do it from memory. I just like to have my list. Uh, so the item in front of the council at this point is, uh, basically a motion to. Uh, approve continued participation in the various settlements that are going on, uh, related to, uh, the opioid. Uh, so we call the opioid crisis. Uh. A number of years ago, a previous council approved participation in, uh, the settlement agreements that were going on with. Uh, manufacturer Janson, uh, several of the distributors and some of the, uh, marketers and the other manufacturers. And, uh, at this point, there's another set coming out with Purdue and the Sackler family. Uh, as well as a, a number of other smaller, um, entities. Uh, that are involved in the production and or distribution of opioids. The council, uh, always has the option, or rather, the community has the option through its council to, uh, participate in those settlements and take. Uh, the share that it might get, which by the way, in this particular instance is not known, uh, until. The number of, uh, in, of municipalities that are taking the deal, so to speak, uh, is known. But, uh. The alternative to us not participating in these settlements is to, A, either take nothing. Or B, pursue a legal action with these families, with the Sackler family and the producers ourselves individually. Um, obviously, I would never recommend that. Uh, so, uh, just by way of background, uh, to date, according to our last report that we filed just a few weeks ago. Uh, we've received a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars, uh, from these settlements, which is right now being held by the town. Uh, we have made minor expenses out of it primarily for, uh, Narcan and opioid response, uh, tools. Uh, but right now, we're sitting on those funds. Uh, it is, I think I outlined it in the, in the memo. It's been my intent to hold those to part, to use to support our future, um. Prevention partnership or are basically our youth drug, use prevention programming, uh, as. We now are hopefully entering into another phase of that where our share will begin to increase. And I would like to use these dollars to offset that. Uh, difficult to predict what these will be, but, um, you know, as you can see from the settlements that we've received. In the last three years, the numbers are pretty significant. I think there's some prepaying going on, but. Uh, we were probably averaging someone are supposed to average somewhere around twenty to twenty-five thousand a year. Uh, from these, uh, programs, if I remember correctly, and now we're adding now, you know, another manufacturer. Probably the prime manufacturer and, uh, some others to it. So. My recommendation certainly is to go ahead and continue to participate in these settlements and. Uh, sign the paperwork. So the motion would be for, uh, the town to continue with these and to authorize me to execute the agreements when they come.
I'll make the motion to continue and authorize me to sign the agreement.
Okay. Motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion? Any further questions? If not, pick one of those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Who's nay? Seven.
Thank you.
Just make sure you get the check when we see.
They all come in electronically, these, they have no fun.
Agenda item ten, town manager report.
Uh, thank you. As always, uh, my town manager report is, uh, included in the packet. And for this meeting or on the agenda page for this meeting, uh, as well in the, uh, town manager report section of, uh, the, uh, website. Um, I'll, I'll just mention a couple of things. Uh, council member, uh, Solomon already talked a little bit about the water committee. Uh, that was an item that was included under, uh, the town manager other section. I'll just mention two other items that are kind of interesting. Uh, and then take any questions, uh. You know that the town is insured by an entity called PERMA or Connecticut Interlocal Risk Management Agency. And it is basically a mutually, a mutual insurance company in which the town of East Hampton and every other member is an owner. Uh, there is a board that oversees it as representatives of, of municipalities, including both, uh, elected officials and professionals. And of course, they have a staff. Uh, that supports, uh, the activity. For a number of years, PERMA has made a decision on, uh, based on its performance and its expected, uh, costs into the future. Uh, to return some of the premiums that we have paid in the past. Uh, we, meaning all of the members. And so I, I noted here, uh, that this year they returned, uh, thirty-six thousand dollars in change. Uh, of premiums that were paid by this municipality in the past, uh, and based on the overall performance of. PERMA and its risk management activities among the various members in the state, uh, of which there are, uh, quite a few. And so that's an interesting item. Uh, we have received that in the past, but this is one of the biggest, uh, distributions that they have done. So I think they're. Uh, feeling pretty good about how, uh, they have impacted our losses as a group. Uh, and have, uh, helped us manage our risks. So, uh, that's good news. The other thing I'll mention is that is a part of the follow-up from the ambulance task force's work and its request on behalf of the council. For the ambulance association to provide financial reports. Uh, the first provided report, which is for the first quarter of the ambulance's fiscal year, uh, is also included in this report. Uh, for people to take a look at. And then other fun things that are in there, I'll just mention, I heard you all talking about it earlier, uh. For those in the community that are interested in seeing it, there is a rundown that was created by the Legislative. Uh, Research Bureau or whatever they're called today, uh, that outlines. Various pieces of legislation that were adopted in the last legislative session that impact municipality. Uh, interesting read, lots of things that, uh, changed for us or. You know, changed a little bit of day-to-day and some things that are being more significant. We continue to go through that as staff and will be in front of the council, post things later if necessary.
Our state legislators make sure you can take your e-bike on the airline trail. That was one of the agenda items.
Lots of interesting things in there, some that we would all agree with, some that perhaps none of us would agree.
Yeah, I, I'd just like to comment, my, uh, family, some of my family played on the tennis courts, the new tennis court.
At Seashore Park?
And at Seashore Park and they said they were wanting.
Oh, terrific. Good to hear.
Good to hear. David, I have just one question. I hope it, curve ball doesn't hit you. I think, how long before the, uh, work in the village center is going to be?
So, uh, I did, I did have a note in there about that. Uh, right now, we're, we're continuing to lean on them, obviously, based on. Those of you who remember my comments in the past, clearly well beyond what we anticipated, uh, and had hoped for. Uh, right now, the contractor is telling us that they should be finished by the middle of October. Uh, so about five, six weeks from now, they should be finished.
And what was their deadline and are they in any penalty phase of the contract at this point?
So, um, they did have a, a time for performance, uh, about a three months time for performance. Um. We haven't started talking with them about what, uh, their penalty might be. Uh, we're, as I said, mainly focused on getting them to the finish line. Uh, and as necessary, we'll talk about whether there are, whether there are penalties and what those penalties.
Well, it's supposed to be done before our home.
That was the goal, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, two months after this. And still another, with a month of loss out, that's ridiculous.
I don't think we have any disagreement with anyone.
Well, that's why I wanted to go with the penalty by contract because the, you know, um, every day it could be, there could be something in the contract.
There is, there are liquidated damages in the contract and we'll, we'll end up in a discussion with them over what. We'll end up in a discussion with them over what are the days that they get credit for, what are the days that they don't get credit for? Um, what are their real penalty days? You know, they had issues in the beginning, as some of you will recall, they had issues in the beginning with the state. And, uh, the state giving them permission to proceed, unexpected by any of us. Uh, we, we, of course, by the time we got now to, um, old home days, we pulled them off the site. Um, you know, so I think there will be, you know, there'll be a discussion over what those penalties are and how they get implemented. Um, and whether there are any allies that they've had, had to experience because there are certain parts of that contract that of course have. Um, quantities related to them. So, it'll all get balanced up. And I think we'll have a great product. You know that you, I mean, the community knows that they have moved, uh, to the south side of Summit Street, for example, right now, and I think. Uh, that particular stretch will be very dramatically improved. Uh, once we're finished through there. I think, I'm hoping that, I anticipate that the entryways to those businesses will be better. Uh, certainly we'll have a sidewalk that goes through there all the way up to Bevan Boulevard. Um, you know, it'll be a, I think it'll be a, a real nice attraction and a better improvement for that, that part of the town. Any other question?
No. Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Then, agenda item eleven, appointments.
Chairman, thank you, yes. We, uh, fortunate to have several members this evening. Uh, must say. It's, uh.
it's great, very, uh, it's great to see more and more people. People with real interest and real, real experience wanting to serve on our boards. So here we go. I'd like to nominate Daniel Wazowski to the Fire Commission as an alternate for the term ending November 30, 2027.
Motion made and seconded. Now, we'll vote on the alternate position of the Fire Commission. Who's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post nay?
Aye.
Uh, next, I'd like to nominate Mike Rabilo to the Planning and Zoning Commission as an alternate to fill the position, to fill the term ending 12/31/25.
Motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion on the journey serving for a month and a half?
That's what the term is.
Yeah.
That's what the term goes.
Any other discussion? If not, those in favor, appointments signify by saying aye.
Aye. Post nay?
Free reappointments, which I would do all at once here. I'd like to nominate Kevin Burnham back to the Design Review Board for term ending June 30, 2027. Chuck, Chuck Yankner to the Conservation Lake Commission for the term ending 6/30/29. And Jason Hartling to the Conservation Lake Commission for the term ending 6/30/29.
Second. Is there any discussion regarding the appointments or reappointments? If not, who's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
And then last, one last item. We had a resignation from the EDC Economic Development Commission, Dan Fagan resigned. And I want to nominate Peter Johnson, who was currently an alternate member of the EDC to the full position for the term ending December 31, 2027.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Any discussion on that? On the appointment, excuse me. Those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
That's it. Thank you.
Now, item 12, perhaps?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I would like to make a motion to return 22 refunds totaling $5,085.8 cents, which way for owners.
Made and seconded. Any discussion? If not, those in favor, preparing overpaid taxes, we see, by saying aye.
Aye.
Post nay? And item 13, public remarks. It's 31 this time. Public remarks.
Anyone? My name's Ray Graff, I live on Laurel Ridge. Former building inspector, helper out here in East Hampton. All time, and I'm still. My remarks are in reference to Leaven Skinner. From my understanding of the project, and I don't, I haven't seen any of the numbers or not. But if you're taking a building that is far better than what we have now, and you're all, you're leased, the owner's going to build it up to what you want, or, or to the best of what you can get out of the building. Because even if you build a brand-new building, which, you know, $35, $40 million, which I don't think those numbers, and that's really what it's going to cost. If, if the guy's building it out, and you don't have to spend a half a million dollars, a million dollars of market tax, not spending money on prevailing wage, you're leasing it for 20 years, and then he's getting it back to you. It's, to me, it seems like a, a no-brainer. And then a gift, to be honest with you. Regardless of what you look here, say on, on Facebook, or let's talk East Hampton, all that other stuff. There's a lot of contradicting, we don't like this guy. I mean, I've dealt with all the contractors here in town, so their, their contracts, they're all the same. Doesn't, doesn't, you know, you can look at it any way you want. I just think, you know, it's a gift horse. Type of item that, really, it's going to cost you $35, $40 million to renovate to, to renovate the other buildings, especially Bard and Hill. I mean, that's more of a tear down. To make it ADA compliant, all of it. You're, you're really looking to spend way more money than building the structure that we're meaning you know, you, you pick a committee to figure out exactly what they want to build out to. I mean, I'm all for public safety. And generally, public safety usually gets shot in the foot all the time trying to get money for fire trucks or labor or equipment, all that stuff. That's pretty much it. I really think, well, actually, I think it would also be a shame for this committee who's been through all of this for now, just to can it on the road to let the next group decide to kick it. I mean, how many times do you want to kick the can?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Just to point out one thing, we will be, we would be subject to prevailing wage regardless.
Building it up by himself.
Anyways. Any, anyone else? Sorry, may public remarks. Anyone online? Oh, sir. Moving on. And item 14, Communications Correspondence and Announcements.
Uh, tomorrow, at Bellwood, we are having a ribbon cutting for the $1.5 million CBD grant um, at 10 o'clock, if anyone is interested. Have a enjoy.
Thank you. Nothing else. Moving on to agenda item 15, adjournment. And the real rule.
Yeah.
Well, the executive, the favorite, the highest. Thank you all.